Hello, everybody. I will call this workshop to order on May 25th at 6:00 PM. I'll dispense with the pledge and the indication. We'll move right to it. As I do, two announcements I'll make, as I will with the commission meeting is the mask policy. We are following the CDC guidelines. We're keeping ourselves distant. So it is voluntary if folks want to wear a mask, but it is not necessary any longer. So with that, we'll go to roll call.
Mr. McMullen.
Present.
Mr. Paulin.
Here.
Commissioner Ramos.
Present.
Vice Mayor Satterfield.
Present.
Mayor Stark.
Here.
Hi. We have a quorum.
All right. And again, I will note for the record that due to extenuating circumstances, both the mayor and Commissioner McMullen had the need to be on Zoom for the meeting. So with that, we go and turn it over to Steve.
All right. So the purpose of this workshop tonight is to really just kind of start setting the stage for the budget for the 2122 budget and with the big emphasis on capital projects. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the budget's schedule. And then, and we're pretty tight right now as far as staff goes. We're going through changing over our accounting system. We've got a lot of things going on, but we're putting the budget together, but we'll meet these timelines right there. So I'm going to go through the timelines first, and then I'm going to have a real emphasis on the capital, on the capital side of things. So first thing with the budget schedule, so we did get an email from the property appraiser this past week, and they will be sending out the estimate of the 21, 2021 taxable value on June 1st. By the way, I don't know if anybody knows Roger Ross. He's been with the property appraiser's office for 35 years. He did announce he's retiring in the spring. So he's been a huge help for staff through the years since I've been here and prior to that with the property appraiser's office. Anyways, June 22nd, we'll need to approve a tentative school budget. Again, the school year is July 1st to June 30th, and we need at least a tentative budget. School, we do a final budget in September when we have all the information. That'll be coming on June 22nd. July 1st is when we get all the DR 420s and all the information. Actually, we get it like the week before, but that's the actual trim timeline is July 1st to get all the preliminary tax form from the property appraiser. Those are the ones that are pretty well set in stone for putting together your budget. Then by July 27th, the commission needs to send the tentative military for next year. I'll talk a little bit about that in a second after I get through this. And then, as happens every year, we were noticed that the school board is doing their public hearing on September 14th, which would be our regular meeting. So I'm recommending we shift the first public hearing to Monday, September 13th. And then the second meeting, the second public hearing would be Tuesday, September 28th. So that's just this, like I said, the primary budget schedule. I'll have those two dates when I come back with the budget on July 27th. And the millage, well, the commission, I'll recommend those dates and the commission can approve those officially. But that's tentatively what the budget schedule would look like as far as meetings and the things that we need to adhere to.
Well, say, probably, it's a night of the stone, but the July 27th meeting, I might be out of town, so that one I might miss. I will try to zoom in, but where I'm at, it's kind of sketchy, too. So.
September 28th.
The July 27th.
So with, you know, going back to being in person now, we just, if y'all, and we've been doing it this week with everything, just coordinate with the lease so we make sure we have a three-person quorum in person. So, you know, some of the major budget considerations for next year, again, the capital infrastructure projects are going to be huge, and I'm going to go through quite an extensive list of those. And that has to do with funding sources that include impact fees, grants, and now the American Rescue Plan, which is part of the discussion. Another thing I want to look at with next year's budget is staff salaries. Nancy's been working on evaluating staff salaries and directors and such. I'm very interested in retaining the great staff that we have. I am not looking to add full-time staff into next year's budget. That will probably be a conversation for this time next year. Just, just, just kind of how we're looking at things, but I do want to make sure we're taking care of the current staff and salaries with COVID and things coming back. Starting to see a lot of, a lot of push on salaries. I just want to make sure we're in a good place with that. So it may be a little bit more than the, the 3% that we generally have been working with last couple of years. So I'm looking at the police department as well as regular staff. The school staff will be kind of dictated by the governor's budget once he signs that. So Pam and Renee and Nancy have been looking at the teachers and the school staff as according to the, to the governor's budget. And the last thing is the evaluation of the military. We had two years in a row where we were able to incrementally reduce the military rate from 6.75 to 6.5. We will evaluate. We didn't do it this past year because, or the current year that we're in right now because of COVID and worries about, you know, what the revenues were going to look like. I will evaluate, and there may be an opportunity to do another incremental. It may not be a lot, but at least an incremental reduction in the military rate. But I'll have that better, once I get those property values and able to do the analysis, that'll be a discussion that we'll have in July to talk about. But I am always have my eye on that military rate. The other thing I just want to put out there is a budget that we're working on for 2021, 2022, so starting on October 1st to September 30th, the next year, is based off of property value information from last calendar year.
Right.
Okay, so through the end of 2020.
Give just one second. They don't see the presentation. Hold on.
Did you use a sharing? It doesn't look like it's got the little.
Sorry, guys.
That's all right. We're getting into the meat of it now, so.
That looks better. Okay, that looks better.
All right. So I'm talking about the property values and what we're going to see on June 1st is all based off of last calendar year. And so I know people are already eyeing the apartment complex over on Oakland Avenue. I'm wondering how that's going to impact military rates and property values and all of that. That, if any of those buildings get a CEO this year, those buildings will be on the taxable when we're talking this time next year. So that's when we might be able to do a bigger evaluation of the rate because those will add positive value to the town. But I just don't want people to, there's always a lag when you're looking at things coming on, and those buildings are not going to impact our budget until, so we're talking this time next year. So when we're talking about the 2223 budget, that's when that apartment complex will have an impact on.
If they get a, if they get a CEO this year.
During this calendar year. So they have four buildings and the little center in the middle. I don't think all four buildings are going to make it on this year, but again, I don't have their production timeline. So that, we'll just have to wait and see how that works out. But I just want to make sure people understand that those will have an impact, and it might be a bigger discussion on millages next year. Again, we have to do the analysis and look at the overall impacts of all this. So we'll talk about the military rate in July as far as, as far as this coming here.
Steve, the one thing I would also say is I think that that works in our favor regarding caution because this housing market is just getting too hot. So that may help us in the future if we have a correction.
Yes, I would agree with you. And again, we're on the conservative side, and anything we look at, you know, we want to make sure it's something that's sustainable and we're not bouncing military rates around. So I do agree with you on the housing market. It's a little, it's hard to know what it's going to look like a year from now or two years from now. So. The next slide, I'm going to go through the capital projects, the impact fee projects that we had in this year's budget and just give you an update on where each one of these projects is. And then I'm going to talk about some projects that are funded by multiple sources, and it kind of plays into the projects we'll be talking about for next year. So the first one on there was the Northwest Loop Study, which was a water project. Go back to the, yeah, I'll talk about that one next. But I'm going to go through each one of those projects on the graph.
Oh, you want me to go back?
This one right here.
Okay.
All right. So the first one is the Northwest Loop Study Project, which is, has not been started, but it was one that we had in the budget, and Mike can correct me, but I think it had to do with making sure that we had proper water supply over on the west side. We got a couple of development projects that may help to fix this situation, but we are keeping an eye, it's partly when that the, they take out the water line that goes over the turnpike. So it's just one of those things, we've got an issue over there. We may be able to correct it through development, or we may need to do something else. So we had some money in there in case we needed to react to it. The next project is the additional water well, number three. You had a presentation on that a couple of weeks ago. So we've been working through the design and getting that project some legs in order to look at next year for construction funding. East Gully Improvements, Mike's got a contractor on board, and that's, that's a project that had to do also with the water supply, some sizing of some pipes that needed to be corrected. So that is in the, is moving forward. It's under contract, and that project will be going on during this, this year. The Alternative Water Supply Project, again, we had money in there for the design. You had a presentation on that going back in April. I'll talk a little bit about that more in next year's projects, but just it was one of the projects we had on the list to get that project moving forward this year. Spear Park Phase Two, we had the courts. That is, you know, the two tennis courts that has been completed. Spear Park Playground was another big project that we had in this year's budget that is under construction. And moving forward, we should be able to meet that June 17th deadline and having the new playgrounds up. Sadler Trail Extension was another project that we talked about, and that was doing the paved trail from where it ends in Longleaf along Sadler Road out to Tub Street. Mike's got a preliminary design on that. We have, we are ready to find somebody to do that. So I've got it listed as under procurement so that we can go ahead and get that paved trail going. With that, the other thing that we're looking to do is where the property line is between the town's property and the commercial, the veterinary clinic and big toy storage. We are looking to go ahead and plant a buffer, a landscape buffer along that property line so that it can get in and get going prior to us doing any further development on that property. There are some berm's out there that I think we're supposed to kind of block. So we're going to try to get some, some actual landscaping in there to get that going so that the berm's can be rearranged in order to do some, some future development with some amenities in that area.
Are those berm's just going to be cleaned up for right now?
Yes, they could be.
You know, I don't think we're looking to take the berm's out until the landscaping buffer gets gone.
Yes, because they do give a lot of privacy with all that industrial warehouse or the commercial warehouse in the back.
So we are, we are looking to do some extensive landscaping so that we can replace those berm's with a landscape buffer.
And one that gets mature.
Yes.
When the landscaping gets mature.
So we're away, Sherman.
Yeah. But we want, we need to go ahead and get that going so that when we want to do the next phase of the project, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. The Jake Voss Pier Improvements, the same thing. We're working on getting a contractor in to get that done. We've got bidable plans, and so we're working on getting a contractor in to, to make those ADA improvements down at the pier. Law enforcement, the Body Cam was in the law enforcement impact fees. Those have been purchased and deployed through Oakland Police Department. So they are using those daily as part of their, their routine now. Star Street to Highway 50 Development, so where Tractor Supply and Lakeside Church are, they are developing Star Street between those two properties. And we brought forth a project to pave between the back of the Tractor Supply property to Oakland Avenue and make some other improvements, including a sidewalk. We now have a design, and we've met with some of the neighbors on it, and we're meeting with the Presbyterian Church next week to go over the design with them. We needed to rearrange some stormwater issues in the area prior to going to talk to the Presbyterian Church, but now we've got something that we can go sit down with them and work out. So we've got, I think they've got four people that are meeting with Mike and I next week to go over those plans and start, start working through that process with them. So that's, that's where that's at. Oakland Avenue Turnouts, and we did the ones on Cross Street. That's where, where those intersections, where the dirt roads meet the pavement, it gets so rutted and hold water. And so we've been doing some paving and putting some aprons on those intersections. So we've done two this year there at Cross Street, and they are completed. Transportation Study and Design. This was intended to take a harder look at Oakland Avenue, get some commission and community input in order to define what the future of Oakland Avenue is going to look like. So taking that mobility master plan that we have, that we've been using, and defining that a couple of steps further so that we can then, when the big roundabout's done, we can then start looking at further improvements along Oakland Avenue. And it's, you know, the idea is to keep it that community road and not make it attractive as a cut through. And so we've got a, Jay's been going through the process for a consultant. We've got a consultant that we'd like to bring forward at the next meeting to get that study going on. It's going to be, it's going to take a little bit of time. We've got a couple of community meetings in it, and it's really to take Oakland Avenue and break it up into bite-sized pieces that we can prioritize projects. And then this time next year, hopefully I'll have a list of, you know, five or six or seven Oakland Avenue projects, and we can maybe start funding those either through impact fees or maybe some grants, or if the county comes back with sales tax funding. But we will be ready. We'll have a conceptual look at what it should look like and some 10% design, you know, real basic design as well as estimated budgets, which will then give staff the tools to execute what the commission and the community wants. So that's, that's the idea with that. So that is beginning. We've got a consultant coming on June 8th, and we'll, we'll move forward with that. So that's going to take a little bit of time, but like I said, it's really all predicated on the big roundabout project. That's really going to take up a lot of the oxygen in the room for the next 12 to 18 months. Get that one done. But while that one's getting finished up, we'll be able to start programming the next project. Mid-block Crossing at Oakland Avenue, that was the signage that all has been completed. I think the last two signs been put up.
I don't have that yet, but.
We got two last signs and the two stop bars that are going to be done, and then that project's done.
Have we got to where we know if we're going to have to change them from a bunch of red lights or not?
I don't believe that made it through the legislature.
Okay. And we had any comment on that at all? Anyone, I haven't seen anything where people said so. It seems to be.
The one dysfunctional thing is the missing piece of trail, and we're still working on that. That's, we're getting a little closer. But again, that's, that's in the, with the state right now. They have to finish the, their due diligence on that. The Lit Station Generator that we had put in the budget at mid-year, that's been purchased and is over in the yard. So if you have any question about that, Mike can answer that. Trail Property Acquisition, we had identified a couple of things that we could, could do to enhance the trail. Those are still ongoing discussions at this point. We haven't gotten to the point where we can pull a trigger on either one of them. And then we had a couple of other projects in there that, one of them was under the fire impact fees, which is some hydrant upgrades. Mike's still looking at that, and that's something that we'll do when the opportunity presents itself. And then the Town Center Plan is just something that we need to do at some point, but with everything else we got going on, it's kind of in the back burner at this point. So we'll keep some funding in there, and when the opportunity presents itself for that Town Center Plan, we will work on, on that because that's really looking at both space needs for staff and the future of the Town Center, some of these spaces that we have here, like in front of the Arts and Heritage Center. Do we move the trail? Do we not move the trail? That kind of, those kind of discussions. So that, that is something we definitely need to look at. Like I said, we've got a lot of other things that we're, we're trying to get accomplished.
I have one more to ask about that I don't know if in consideration or not, and that is the concession stand at the Art and History Center. If we're having so much trouble finding someone in the spot the way it is, do we want to start to consider maybe doing some improvements to it to make it more palatable for people or doing something different with it? Should we put some money aside for that? Because just sitting there, it's doing nothing.
I have one other lead that I've been kind of working the last couple of weeks, and I still don't know where, where it's going to go. But if, if it doesn't pan out soon, then I think we can take some money out of operating. It wouldn't be a big capital project, but I think we take some money out of operating, and we go ahead and move forward with making, going in a different direction on that.
So.
So if I, if this other lead kind of works out, I'll come back and let you know. I'm still kind of waiting on it and trying to give them a little bit of time to react to that.
All right. As long as it's in focus, you know, one way or the other, where it comes from, as long as we can get somebody in there.
You're going to bring Pepsi in and sell it?
Well, there certainly will not be Coca-Cola. That's, that's in there, in the thing we sent out to people that says, you know, you will have to serve Pepsi here.
So that's an update on the current projects this year and kind of the status from where they're at. Any questions on these? I've got three more that are a little bit bigger projects.
No. Guys, good?
All right. Next, next slide is, these are projects that are, have multiple funding sources. It wasn't just impact fees. So the first one, and this is really just an update, Lit Station 5, which is over on Brock, near the Presbyterian Church and the Baptist Church. That project is essentially complete. We're now working through the closeout documents on that. We've got one more reimbursement request to make with the state. We've been reimbursed already about 75% of the project. We've got the last couple invoices to send to the state, and by June 30th, that project will be closed out. So that was the $1 million grant that we got in 2017, 2018 through the sale. It was a legislative appropriation. So that was the 1718. It's taken us about two and a half years to get the project done, but it is being completed and will be closed out by June 30th. I think we're a little bit short on the funding.
Yeah, if I could just add, it was, that million dollars also covered the force main from Tub Street to Longleaf and the gravity sewer out of the industrial area.
Yeah. Yeah, there were three pieces to that project, which is part of why it's taken so long.
Thank you, Mike.
But that, I think we're going to be short about $20,000 because a couple of the things actually came in at better prices than I had expected, but we pretty much have exhausted that entire million dollars. The next one is the septic to sewer conversion. And again, that, that one, you know, we just did the bid award here recently, and we'll be working for, working towards getting that under construction and having some community meetings with the residents in that area. I bring this up, the project will roll in the next year. It is a multi-year project. It's a total of about a $1.6 million project that has CDBG funding, funding from DDP, funding from St. John's, and some impact fees attached to it. So it's, like I said, multiple funding, multiple year project that's, we're really getting into the meat of it now with the construction. And then the last one that was in this year's budget is the Roundabout Project. Again, this one's going to roll in the next year, too. It's a multi, it's a multi-year project. The design is done. The agreements with the state are done. The state's funding this project to the tune of $2.3 million per the interlocal agreement with the county. We had to set aside $1 million for the project, which we had budgeted this year. We'll take that 1 million and we're rolled into next year because that construction's not actually going to start till January. It does go out to bid on July 1st, 1st of July. So just, just a reminder, you know, multi-year project, we've got some funding tied up with that. Now, if the bids kind of, and this is all dependent on the bids, but once we get those bids in, then we will be able to adjust that million dollars with the county, or we may just leave it in there through the end of the project, but we shouldn't have to spend that entire million dollars.
That was my.
Again, it's all predicated on getting those bids, construction bids back. So.
Cool.
Next thing I wanted to bring up was the American Rescue Plan, which there's still a lot of information going around. I've gotten stuff from the ICMA, which is the City County Manager Association, National League of Cities, Florida League of Cities. We even got some stuff from Congresswoman Deming's office. So there's a lot of information out there. All I put up is just the allowable uses because I didn't want to get into the minutia about, they're talking about reporting, they're talking about some of the details, the treasury's going to come out based on these allowable uses, when we're going to get the money, things we've done, all the, everything that's on the checklist as far as Dunn's numbers and different things that we need to do as a town, most of that's taken care of. We just need to figure out how the state's going to disperse the money to the smaller 50,000 and less cities and whether it's going to be through an agreement or not. They can't put really any strings on it anymore than what the feds have already put on it. So we're working through that. But I wanted to key in on a couple of things with the allowable uses. So there are a few things that really don't apply to the town. We don't have either the infrastructure or the programs to do these kind of things, and it's, they're really things that the county will certainly be using their money for, and that's to respond to pandemic or negative economic impacts, including assistance to households, small businesses, and nonprofits, or aid to impacted industries such as tourism, travel, or hospitality. That's not something we really have a scope for or infrastructure for in order to be able to allocate money like that. The other thing is premium paid eligible workers. We didn't work through anything like that that had to do with the pandemic. The next two are things that I, that absolutely do apply to the town. And one of them, so the first one is you can, it's basically filling the gap on your revenues. We have not gone through and done the analysis. There actually is a formula that I saw yesterday that I need to pull up that Renee and I need to sit down and go through on how you calculate any revenue losses that you would have had because of the pandemic. So we can go through that exercise to see if any of this money is applicable to put into basically our general revenues to fill those gaps. That will be a small percentage. And again, what we're looking at is about 1.3 million over two years. The money has to be spent by 2024, and it has to all be reported out by like 2026. There's, you know, there's a bunch of things that have to happen with this. So the thing that makes the most sense for the town is the opportunity to invest in infrastructure. So they do have water and sewer and broadband. We, again, broadband's not something that we have, infrastructure or that we, the investment in doing broadband as a town, I think is beyond something we'd want to look at. We'd be in competition with Comcast and CenturyLink anyways, but the water and sewer just kind of stands out to me. And we've got a number of projects as I get into the next thing that would fit that water and sewer infrastructure. So that's where I'm coming from as far as the recommendation is to look at the opportunity to use some of that American Rescue Plan money and apply it to some of these projects that we've been, already been talking about.
By the time that we do the calculations that we need to do to see where losses were and stuff applicable to us, will that, will that be in this year?
Yeah. It'll be part of the budget that we'll be working on. Either we'll apply it to next year's budget or this year's budget. But I, I'm thinking it's going to be a small percentage, like maybe 20 or 20%, 20, 25% of the money that we're, that we're being allocated, you know? So we'll, we'll look at that, and then I'd like to apply the rest of it. And then the one thing that I don't go through on here is the school project, which we've got fully funded with the HVAC. There could be some opportunities with that, but we also, as, we've got that funded and, and taken care of, so it might be more applicable to fund the water and the sewer as projects. So again, this is just conceptual at this point. I just want to make sure that it makes sense to everybody what, or what's being proposed. And so I am, I'm looking for any feedback as far as that goes. So I've got like 10 projects I'm going to go through as proposed for next year, and the ones that. And the ones that have the American Rescue Plan, I'll highlight those specifically. So the septic to sewer conversion, again, that's a multi-year project. So you will see that as part of next year's budget also. And we'll show those different funding sources for that project. The roundabout project's the same thing. Again, that one won't start construction until January, so it's truly a multi-year project. And so again, that funding is going to roll into into next year's budget. And we do have enough transportation impact fees to fund that with without an issue. Lift station number six is essentially a new project that is the tied to the legislative appropriation that we've got in the current fiscal year. It's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We just went through and we've got the agreements in place. It takes seven months after the budget's approved in July. It's usually about the time that you get all the agreements and everything in place for to to spend the money. So we've got that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars now in place. We're working on the design of the project. This lift station is the one that's going to be behind the charter school and behind the public safety building. It's about a four to five hundred thousand dollar project, if not a little more. And we've got two hundred and fifty thousand of it covered with the legislative appropriation. I would like to look at applying, and there's two pieces to the project. There's the actual building of the lift station. And then there's the connection of the charter school and the public safety building to that lift station. So that's an additional cost to get because there's impact fees involved and some things, some costs involved with getting those two facilities connected to that lift station. So I would like to look to possibly apply some of the American Rescue Plan funding to fill the gap on lift station six. And again, I'm looking at things that are long-term investments in the town's infrastructure and that really get the most bang for our buck out of the this American Rescue Plan fund.
Good idea.
Is the school gonna need its own lift station to get to this lift station or were they have a gravity?
Thank you.
They can gravity? Okay, good.
And for it to start, by the time we get everything done, to start in twenty twenty-two, how long does that project take, Mike? That I guess my question would be, will it be ready that we would be able that August to start the school on it? Or will it drag to most of the year?
August of twenty twenty-two?
No.
I was starting school in twenty twenty-two.
It won't be for this year, this August.
Right.
Looking at next calendar.
And that would be twenty, yeah, I'm still thinking nineteen seventy-three, what can I tell you?
Expectation it would be like this time next year is probably the point where the lift station's done and we're doing the connections. You know.
By that August, thank you, Sal.
Yeah, I I would think so.
Good. And nothing to hold you to, just for kind of a guide for me?
I during next budget year, we should be able to get them connected during the town's next budget year.
Right.
Which would be, you know, October, month, September thirtieth of twenty twenty-two, so somewhere in that timeframe. But I, you know, I don't want to pigeonhole because, you know, these things take time. But we are, I think, thirty percent design on that lift station. So as we finish going through that process to get the design, we'll get a bid and and then the construction of the lift station itself, so.
Cool.
The next projects I have on here, so the additional water well, number three. So again, it's a rollover project we've been working on. It's probably a million dollar project. It could be funded from various sources, including impact fees, utility funds. And again, this could be a candidate for the American Rescue Plan as far as water infrastructure. But I don't have any exact numbers to give you on how the the money should be divvied out. I'm just giving you kind of a menu of the the projects that that seem like they would fit. And then once we go through our impact fee funding and kind of see where we're at on these projects, I can come back with more specific numbers to apply. Can't talk about some of those. Same thing with the alternative water supply. Again, this is a rollover project. We've got the design underway. We have filled out the application for inclusion with the state revolving loan fund, which was one of the things that we asked the commission for when we did the presentation. So that's been submitted. Again, this could be impact the state revolving loan fund grants and the American Rescue Plan. This is one that we're we're going to heavily look at adding as a legislative priority, possibly in in the next legislative cycle. So we're looking at any way we can to to fund this project. But the American Rescue Plan money also could be applied to this. And again, we've got two years of this American Rescue Plan. So it may be this year that the part of it goes to additional water well and then next year it goes to the alternative water supply. All it's going to be really about timing on on when the construction dollars are needed. The next project I have on here, and this one is strictly recreation impact fees, would be the Spear Park Phase Three. Trying to finish up those master plan improvements. So it would be the pavilion. And I think the idea would be to do a pavilion similar to the one over here in Vanderlei Park, the the bigger one that can have two benches underneath it. I think that is kind of what we're looking for as far as a pavilion. And then the junior basketball court next to the current basketball court and then making sure those are all up to up to speed. The butterfly garden and then any remaining connecting sidewalks that we need to do. So that would be the the Spear Park Phase Three Recreation Impact Fees. And so we'd start working on that in the next next budget year. I'm calling the next one, the Sadler Park Trail. Phase two, I don't, I'm just using that as a project name. The actual park itself, once we start working on these amenities, the commission, our commission would like to name that park in the future, certainly. But as a project designation, we're just calling it the Sadler Park Trail. So by this point, as we're looking at this, you know, we're going to do the the paving and we're going to start that, get that buffer going. Then we'll start working on actually the the next phases with the amenities. So sometime during the next budget year, we'll start working on the playground, exercise stations. And and if everybody's amenable, a dog park as part of that linear park development. So again, those those berms, you know, we want to, we want to get the landscape buffer up and then be able to move those berms. You know, if the if the, because that takes up quite a bit of space there, if the commission's amenable with that. So. Public safety building, interior renovations. Talking with Chief Peak and the the space that they have over there, they need to rearrange their space so they can get more efficient working spaces for the officers. And we've added some officers over the years, but we haven't changed the space over there. So it's all interior, we're not looking at any space. We do have some law enforcement impact fees that can be used for, you know, as we've increased, and that's one of the things we need to do is increase the space over there and also look at some of the technological need.
You're saying increase the space, but you mean rearrange the space?
Rearrange the space. Yeah, that's. Increase the number of cubicles, rearrange the space.
Yeah, room for that in there without expanding the building, chief?
A little bit.
Little bit?
We've a triple the size of the admin staff in the last year or two.
Oh, I know.
Preparation for growth. We haven't actually increased officer staff in a few years, but it's coming and I just want to be prepared for it.
Well, I think, you know, future thinking may be a little more than just rearranging space. Because you can arrange as much space as you want and you just make everybody's space a little bit smaller, a little harder to work. That I don't want to throw good money after bad.
Correct.
I I think this is the first step that we need to do and as far as, you know, a company. Because when you start talking, you know, increasing space.
I know.
It 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 multiplies. So what we're looking at, so it's looking to be about an eighty to ninety thousand dollar project to do the renovations that we're talking about. If we look to increase space, it'll be five times that. We don't have the funding or something like that. Again, we are going to have to look at some overall.
Somehow.
incremental needs for staffing, both public works, the police department, and then as well as the space needs for all that. So that's going to be a bigger discussion over the next couple of years as those things, you know, we're making it work right now.
This will be a temporary fix, but, you know, they get too uncomfortable and we need to get to the next phase and start talking about it sooner than later before we have.
We got to keep in mind at how this growth is going to pan out and where we're we're at in the cycle. So I don't want to jump on it too quickly, but it's definitely part of the conversation that we need to have, you know, over time. So. Yeah, we're we're talking some some serious money and we'd probably be, you know, talking about having to, you know, borrow money like Windermere did. So I I think it's a discussion that we're going to have to kind of slowly kind of work our way into, so. He is looking at some other, some other improvements to make, maybe with some additional cameras that like we have around town. But we'll work through that and that'll be part of the budget as we move forward. Um, that may be part of the 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 impacty budget that that we bring forward in July. Again, the Oakland Avenue turnouts, it's really been kind of a continuing project we've had over the last couple of years. And so we'd like to continue to to move that and Michael identify the next intersection that would make the most sense. That we'll do two more of those turnouts. So we'll put some funding in there for that. And then transportation study and design, like I said, this is just, this project, this uh, this planning project will be a multiple year project. It'll be part of part of this budget year and part of next budget year. So I'll roll over a few funding that we need in the next years to finish that planning study. Like I said, it's it's really just to get a a good solid plan on Oakland Avenue that the commission approves so that staff can then work on getting it executed. And, you know, I know the residents are very concerned about it on Avenue. So we want to make sure we're we're doing something that's in line with the residents and with the commission so that staff can then work on executing it. So it's easier when we know pretty solidly what what what's the, because then we can go after some grant money as well as those other funding sources to help leverage that, as well as working with Metro Plan. Metro Plan's been good to us and we've got the sidewalk plan in there. And maybe we can even break that up into bite-sized pieces with each of these improvements that we're looking to do. So we can, it'll be a multi-year situation with Oakland Avenue, but at least we can get that conversation started. Last one, I put this one in italics because this one is, you know, based on the governor's pen at this point. He has the budget on his desk. We are funded for lift station, essentially what would be the infrastructure and lift station seven. The Jefferson Street extension that we we turned up as our appropriation. So it is funded in their budget for five hundred thousand dollars. If it does not get vetoed, then that will be something, again, it takes seven months for us to get all the agreements in place. But that'll be something that we'll start planning this time next year as far as a project, so. And then just to make it clear with any of these projects, if we're in agreement conceptually and as we move these forward through the budget process, we will always be looking for ways to leverage town funds, grants and opportunities that are out there. So, you know, with some of these playground and exercise stuff, there may be some opportunities for partnerships with somebody like Healthy West Orange. We will look to try to, we just need to make, conceptually know we're headed in the right direction, then we can go start looking for funding sources.
Very good.
So that's that's what I have as far as projects for next year. That was really the the big part of this was making sure conceptually, product wise, we've got projects that we can manage and be forward with and that are in line with what the commission's looking for. And if it's, if that's, if we're if we're in line, then we will start working on programming the dollars for these projects moving forward.
Anybody have any comments or questions?
Great to me. Alex, I feel very tired and I think that if we accomplish all of this, it's going to be long after some of us have left the building. But it really, really looks good.
How about you? Good?
I meant to ask before, which homes coming online first, Steve? I couldn't remember. I apologize for not remembering.
Which one? What's that?
Which what's home, which homes are coming online with the sewer, which which the sixty lots or sixty homes, which one are coming online first?
Those are right over off of, what's the street?
The septic to sewer?
Yeah.
Yeah. Like down by Sadler, Oakland Avenue, Walker and Jefferson.
Yeah, so it's over there on the west side, adjacent to Pulte, closest to that lift station on the south side of Oakland Avenue.
Paul Avenue also.
Yeah.
Paul Avenue.
So those those will be, that's our septic to sewer project through the CDBG because it's low and moderate income over in that area. And that that's going to be our.
Are we telling that story? I I want to make sure that we're telling that story and letting the churches know and all that kind of good stuff.
We have told the story and we're getting ready to ramp it up again. So we they we've had, there's been letters and some meetings and knocking on doors that happened about a year ago. And we need to get back out there and ramp that up again now that we're moving forward with it. Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, you know, maybe we can do, you know, maybe we could do some kind of special event or announcement, you know, just to let, you know, the community and, you know, everyone at large know what we're trying to do and especially, you know, the extra effort, you know, just the just the thought. Because, you know, that's something major to let them know that we're really trying to, you know, mitigate those costs to those that may have the biggest challenge. Of course, we're trying to, you know, you know, this is going to be long term. But I'm just thinking, you know, something of this nature should, you know, we should make some big news. I know we're talking about sewer, but if we can make it big news, so, I mean, you guys are doing a great job as far as staff, you know, as far as going after those grants and those dollars. So I I think a lot of times, you know, we just don't tell our story. And I I know, you know, we do tell our story a lot, but something like this really neat, you know, like the West Orange Chamber. We really need to to let, you know, any and everyone know the, you know, the the impact that we're doing for those homes and those families.
We are going to do some tar, I think Mike's already working with our consultant to do some targeted meetings to the community. And then from there, we can, we can enhance what we're, you know, the discussion. But we want to get some targeted meetings with the residents of that area and then and then go from there. So we are, we are working on on that.
Okay. At the table, you guys have anything?
I'm good.
Good.
All right, I I think it's a great job. But I think what what you do for us these days, which is a necessary thing, is you spell everything out on paper for us or some, whether it's electronic or paper or whatever. But for us to juggle all these projects in our head the way we used to do in the past has been getting really confusing, or at least it has for me, being an older gentleman. You know, the same way you did it with the projects on the map to show where they all are and stuff like that. So what you do to make it really clear for us is just a really great job and it's really appreciated, as is all your hard work. This is great information.
Well, and, you know, and I have to give it to staff, everyone, you know, Mike with the management of these projects and Renee with the financial side of things. We just, it takes a lot of work, Elise has has been helping with the CDBG part of it because there's a lot of steps with that. She's got some experience with some of that. So it it's, it takes a team effort in order to make these things happen. Because these grants are not easy to manage as you're going through the process. And I've been helping with some of that, too. And it's just, you know, it does, it takes a team effort. But the the execution of all these projects, all those projects you saw on that first page, you know, a lot of that's on on Mike and the public works crew. You know, he's got a good, good crew working for him and we've got some good consultants. And so we're we're able to get a lot done. You know, I think people are starting to see that, I hope.
Well, it's very obvious that that the entire staff is working as hard as they possibly can, you know, and doing a great job with it. But and again, to Hap's point, or Commissioner McMullin, I'm sorry, Hap. You know, point is, information out to the public, overkill is the is our best tool. As much as we can get out and let people know what we're doing and then how we're doing and where we are, you know, the better off we are. So I I agree with you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much. I wanted to go ahead and also get to know the before and after remodel pictures and how you guys are. Maybe we could put, just for the town, this is how the officers are now, you know, working after the remodel. Kind of start setting up the the mood for next year's conversations eventually. Here's from now, we need to have our police station with ample space.
I don't want anyone to get too worried about jamming people. Yeah, we are going to be a little more closed quarters in there, but it's not what you, we have some space to move some stuff around. The this number of officers, the size of the agency is going to increase in the next few years. And I'm trying to get ahead of the curve. The first step in that is the architectural remodeling of the interior. So we think best utilize the space we have. Nobody's talking about buying a new police building because we are, I'm down. But I understand that we're not ready for that yet and it's okay. I can just utilize the space we have now better. Also, I want to do some technical. Also, I want to do some technological upgrades inside. We have to add more computer ports. We have to add more lines for what we do. Because in the future, we're going to be adding more camera feeds to town. There's more technology out there that's being utilized in the police industry that Oakland's going to be wanting to acquire. And I have to prepare for that. So it's all interrelated with all that.
That'd be nice too, to put it though on the, on the news feed, the monthly Oakland, you know, upgrades at the police station. Try to make it more comfortable.
Yeah.
Until the day, you know, two, three years from now, when it's right, when we're ready. I think that would be nice.
Okay.
No.
All right, anybody have anything else? If not, I will adjourn our workshop at uh, five minutes until seven. Everyone take a five minute break while we convene for our meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, we're good.
All right, so if everybody is ready, I'll call to order this town commission meeting on May twenty fifth at seven oh four. Please stand for the pledge and invocation. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So have a few at least.
Father God, thank you once again for entrusting us with your town. I ask that you give us your wisdom, discernment, and help us make decisions for the best of our citizens. Please put a head to protection around our town and our staff and all the elected officials. Uh, put a head to protection on our mayor who's not here and uh, our Commissioner McMullin. And may we honor you in everything we say this evening, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Who called?
Commissioner McMullin.
Commissioner McMullin.
Present.
Commissioner McMullin. Commissioner Pollan.
Here.
Mr. Ramos.
Present.
Vice Mayor Satterfield.
Present.
Mayor Stark.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, and as I uh, made the announcements at the workshop, uh, due to extenuating circumstances, both the Mayor Stark, Commissioner McMullin have to be here through Zoom. And the other announcement is noticing that we do not have our masks on. We are following the CDC guidelines for masks. They are voluntary, but they're no longer required for our meetings. So um, with that, I will take us to public forum. Is there anyone that has anything they would like to talk about that is uh, not on the agenda? We have nobody in the audience. Do we have anybody working?
Nope.
Nobody there. All right, well, I will move forward to the consent agenda. Uh, if everyone's had any comments or questions on it, we'll hear your pleasure.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have the motion and a second while I have any other conversation. Call for the vote. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We have our consent agenda. We will move on down to our public hearings. First public hearing of ordinance twenty twenty one dash eleven. And I guess Elise, you'll read them and then we'll go from there.
Yeah. Second. Just get it ready and then I'll read it real quick. Public hearing ordinance number twenty twenty one dash eleven, an ordinance of the town of Oakland, Florida pertaining to picketing on public property before, around, or about a dwelling unit in the town of Oakland. Creating a new chapter forty eight residential picketing of the town of Oakland Code of Ordinances, establishing a title providing for authority, findings, purpose, and intent. Providing for scope, creating definitions, prohibiting certain residential picketing, providing for penalties and legal and equitable relief, and providing an effective date.
Thank you.
Chief.
Okay, this came about due to recent incidents around central Florida in the past year, protests from last year. A lot of the sheriff and chiefs got together a few months ago and decided to tighten up our picketing protest ordinance. Some some areas were not well prepared, some were. I want to pre- preface all this by saying, yes, we do have to prepare for this. But um, one good note out of all this, during last summer's protest season, there were protests in every single community in central Florida, including Orange County, every single one, even the small towns, except Oakland. Oakland did not have a single protest. And I like to credit that to a lot of the work that even Steve Thomas started years ago, the community outreach we've been doing, the fact that we talk to our residents all the time. The way that our, we train our officers for the past several years. I think that had a lot to do with why Oakland did not see a lot of that, but every single community in Orange County did. But that being said, we're not immune to something happening here and it could. So um, first thing, we do uh, recognize the right of free speech, expression, peaceful access, and that's simply our constitutional rights to be upheld and respected while also protecting the well-being, tranquility, tranquility and privacy of the home. Nothing in this ordinance prohibits the expression of constitutional rights, but simply protects the town of Oakland and the public at large. This slides a little more redundant, kind of the same thing, but basically it's the purpose of the ordinance to protect the well-being, tranquility, and privacy of the residents of the town of Oakland by prohibiting certain picketing activities. This ordinance is to be interpreted liberally in favor of protecting the public health and safety in addition to the well-being, tranquility, and privacy of the residents of the town. Now, before I go into this, it started out, as I said, the sheriff and the other chiefs of police, we met several months ago to talk about picketing specifically. The purpose of this, this is not, this ordinance has nothing to do about stopping protests or anything. It's about creating a one hundred fifty foot buffer zone between a specific residence or dwelling and protesters themselves. Experience has shown that if the protesters or the picketing is right on the residence and on the sidewalk, on the right away, there isn't, negative interactions can happen between the people that live there. There are some people that live in their homes that are very serious Second Amendment uh, affectionate individuals. And we kind of want to prevent any um, ne- negative interactions between the residents and picketers themselves. So the purpose of the ordinance is to create a buffer area of one hundred fifty feet. This was actually taken and Becky Vos helped draft this. She actually put this together based off the Orange County ordinance and some other examples we use like Winter Park PD and a few others. Under fifty feet will be applied to any and all public property, including right of ways, roads, sidewalks, and parks. The ordinance will also be applied to the property line of a dwelling that could be subject to picketing or protest. The goal basically is just to keep one hundred fifty feet away from the house. So we can be in between them is really the goal. It shall be unlawful for any person to engage in picket, picketing as defined by this ordinance within a buffer area as defined by this war- war ordinance. Any person who knowingly vol- violates section forty eight and has thus created a new chapter in our ordinance book, it's chapter forty eight, may be punished as provided in the town code that we currently have. As provided under applicable or under applicable state laws, penalties may result in fines up to five hundred dollars or sixty days in jail. It's because it's a misdemeanor crime. Now, those penalties are in code of ordinances, but in reality, if we're having to enforce anything, I will most likely direct our officers to enforce it via Florida state statute, either for breach of peace, disorderly conduct, trespassing, and all, whatever, reference our ordinance as part per probable cause. And I recommend that uh, you approve the first review.
All right, questions, comments?
I'm just going to clarify, so if it's a residential dwelling, it'd have to be a hundred fifty feet from the property line, not the house.
Correct.
Okay.
I have a question about this, is, was this ran as our attorney or ran this by our attorney?
Actually drafted the actual one.
She did. Okay, perfect. Good.
Hi, it's people.
Hey, hi.
We trust you. Uh, Mayor Joseph, you have anything?
I just think it's a great idea. I mean, I'm glad, you know, the chiefs around the the county meet together on a regular basis and brainstorm. So I, I, you know, I I applaud the effort.
I like it. Hello. Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm pleased.
Kathy, you sound like you're at a concert somewhere. We we didn't catch that.
Yeah, I thought I, I thought it was my, hey, y'all take a picture of that.
I thought I was at my Grateful Dead concert.
I thought it was my sound.
No. All right, Kathy, you back with us?
Unmuted, she's muted.
She can unmute herself if she likes.
All right.
I'm back, I'm back. I'm sorry, um, I'm out in the country, so the wifi is spotty at best.
No problem. We didn't catch your comments at all, Mayor.
I thought that I was, I said I'm very pleased. I like being proactive, as everybody knows, so. Sorry about that.
No problems. The only question I have, and I'm, yeah, I'm with everyone else, we we need this and thank you for this. The hundred and fifty feet from a property line in the residence itself, was there much conversation around that?
Um, I believe it was taken directly from the Orange County ordinance. Winter Park one is really a lot shorter than that. I didn't like that one particularly. I did have a brief conversation with uh, Steve about it. Um, we could actually lower it if you want. We could make it a hundred feet. I believe the right away from one side of the road is eighty feet. We kind of want to keep them beyond that.
Right.
But that puts them right across the street. Just me? I'd like them a little bit down, but that's just me. Um, how are you guys feeling about that?
Well, my question would be, is it unoccupied properties and occupied properties? Because.
Most likely, they're going to, they're going to be on the sidewalk or the right of way of some street. And the purpose is just keeping away from the residence itself. Are they going to be on someone else's right of way or frontage of their house? Probably.
Yeah, and it doesn't include those parks and it doesn't include.
Well, it does. It actually says a buffer area will apply to any public property, including right of ways, roads, sidewalks, or parks.
Okay, so if they wanted to, they have a area to do it.
I would, we haven't had a protest in Oakland, but say we we did. I would be talking to whoever's leading the protest. I would be asking them, can you do it here? Can you do it there? What can I do to help you? We don't want to restrict anyone's rights to protest, but if we work with them, we can get it done in a safe and amicable way for everyone. The whole point of this is just to keep the protesters or picketers away from the actual house itself. That could lead to tensions. It could lead to incidents, things that we got to get involved in. It's all us about, this is all about being proactive.
Well, I I'm with you and I'm with the mayor. I love being proactive. And this is great, and this will engage the um, conversation with whoever does. At willing, we never have to go through this. So we'll be able to have a conversation and say, you know, we want to help you out. And that way they're in more of an ease, once you engage, before they're able to do it somewhere. So they're already at a standard, we're helping, so.
Right.
Yes.
So we're we're comfortable with the hundred and fifty, everybody?
I wouldn't want to reduce it because I think if you start reducing on the, the, the police officers, I think have better control if it's a hundred and fifty than if it's closer.
Okay.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure that we talked about it and if that was appropriate or not from what others do and if we have the room for it. Because what I don't want to do is restrict someone to where they can't because there isn't enough room with some of the streets.
Yeah, one of the things that came to my mind during this portion, in the event we have an actual event protest, something that's, something that requires riot control, something for by. Oakland Police Department is not big enough to provide that. I would have to resort to armed mutual aid agreements, have the Orange County Sheriff's Office, they would provide units to do this for us. This ordinance matches theirs, so we're all on the same page.
Perfect. Okay. All right. Any other discussion? All right, I will.
I have discussion, but it is not. It is not applicable. To.
God, they.
But if you're, I, all right, freeze up, just keep on going, Mike.
Okay, yeah, it is. It is entertaining as it is, Kathy. We we got you. All right, so.
Mike, just keep on going, okay?
Got it. All right, uh, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number two thousand twenty one dash eleven.
I'll second it.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? I'll call for the vote. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Ayes have it and you have your ordinance. Thank you, chief.
Okay.
Next.
First public hearing ordinance number twenty twenty one dash twelve, an ordinance of the town of Oakland, Florida, amending chapter sixty two, traffic and vehicles, article two, stopping, standing, and parking by the addition of a new section sixty two dash thirty, no school drop off and no parking signs of the Code of Ordinances of the town of Oakland, requiring drivers of vehicles to obey no school drop off and no parking signs were posted, provided for conflict severability, codification, and effective date.
Mr. Parker.
Wow, so if everybody was listening to what she said, it was, the purpose of this ordinance is to amend chapter sixty two of the the town code, uh, traffic and vehicles in particular. So um, I think those of you at the, at the table here have had at least five years or longer of hearing about nobody obeys the no parking signs or the no school drop off signs, uh, basically down here. So we had some public uh, meetings where guests came in and spoke about that. And uh, so this ordinance is uh, is trying to address that problem. I think the uh, staff is prepared for visions for a new section of the code to deal specifically with the uh, no school drop off and no parking signs. It's not surprising that the regulation requiring vehicles to obey the no school drop off and no parking signs is in the best interest of the citizens. It's just a good thing. This regulatory signage will be consistent with standards set by Florida Department of Transportation and will be enforced by Florida statutes and by the Oakland Police Department or any other enforcement agency with jurisdiction on Florida roads. So basically, you're putting teeth into this no school drop off and no parking signs.
So this is specifically in reference to the uh, residents from Winter's Landing that came and spoke a couple of meetings ago. And you can see up on the screen, the map, specifically the intersections we're talking about along that sidewalk uh, for the no school drop off and then the little turnout on Mackey with the no parking signs.
Yeah, currently, currently you have no school drop off at those uh, three locations. We did have the fourth set up, but somebody uh, did not like our signage and removed it without permission, so.
So we're going to, we're going to put consistent DOT type signs up on all four locations and then the no parking at Mackey.
Okay. Questions, comments? Anybody?
Nothing.
Okay, the only question I have on it actually is, does that pertain to golf carts also?
Uh, I think we're going to have a bigger conversation about golf carts in a few months.
Okay, I knew we were, but if they park a golf cart there to pick kids up, what do you do, chief? Right now, with these signs.
Signs get enforced standard DOT circles. If they're dropping off using golf carts, that has to look at that.
Because it'll happen, so be be prepared, so. And this is a good, this is a good first step.
And and I think we're going to have to address golf carts.
Right.
Specifically, as we have that discussion.
Absolutely. Okay, uh, anything else? Any other discussion? Not, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number two zero two one dash one two.
I'm second on.
My motion and a second. Motion and a second, no further discussion. I'll call for the vote, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Next.
Okay, first public hearing ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash thirteen and ordinance of the town of Oakland, Florida, amending chapter fourteen of the Town Code of Ordinances to correct a Scrivener's error as to the transportation impact fee for all educational, providing for inclusion in the town code, providing for an effective date.
Michael, once again, this is, this ordinance is to amend chapter fourteen, transportation impact fees. In twenty eighteen, three years ago, the town authorized Raftellus Financial Consultants to prepare transportation impact fees along with some others, as required by Florida statutes. So they went through, they, they, they updated everything, and, and there's a lot of information in this. Unfortunately, there was a Scrivener's error when it comes to specifically the impact fees to be charged for all educational facilities, so that Scrivener's error would have resulted in a higher impact fee for anybody wanting to do that. We received a letter from Raftellus outlining, and I believe that's in your packet, outlining the error and the correction. So instead of being reflected as a per student impact fee, it needs to be a unit of per thousand square feet, so it's just correcting that error. Okay. Questions? You good? Okay, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance two thousand twenty-one dash thirteen.
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? We'll call for the vote, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All right, and it passes. You can be seated, sir. Next.
Okay, one more. Second public hearing ordinance number twenty twenty-one oh six and ordinance of the town of Oakland, Florida, adding a new section to chapter forty-two Health and Sanitation Town of Oakland Code entitled Burning and Clearing of Lands for Construction or Other Reasons, creating a local exemption for town-owned lands and providing for codification, conflict severability, and effective.
Great, who's going to talk this one?
I'll go ahead.
Okay.
I gave this presentation at the last meeting when Jay was on vacation. Essentially, this ordinance is to, to set up a, a permit process for any developers that want to do land clearing and want to do burning, they would have to come through the, the, they have to follow all the forestry service requirements, but they would also need to get a permit through the town so that we can be alerted as to what's going on and be able to make some decisions on, on whether they can burn or not. So like I said, I went through a presentation on the last one, any questions anybody might have, this is the second reading.
Anybody?
I have no questions.
Okay, I believe on the second reading I have to close this and go to a public hearing, although we will close the meeting and go to public hearing, although we have nobody, I believe, nobody online, right?
Nobody online.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the table. What's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number two zero two one dash zero six.
I'm second on.
Motion and a second, no further discussion, I'll call for a vote, all in favor, aye. Motion passes. All right, thank you. We're down to town manager reports.
I just have a couple of things. First thing, I didn't put it on the, I don't think I put it on the manager's report, but I am going to be at the Ford City County Managers Association has a conference next week, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. So Wednesday afternoon I will be doing my ethics training, and then Thursday and Friday I'll have some sessions. It's just in Orlando, so I'll be traveling. So I'll be available for, for staff if they need anything, but I will be down in Orlando those three days. And then the other thing, we had the business after hours on Thursday night with the chamber. The town hosted it here in the building, and it was a very, very nice event, it was well-attended, and I thought it was a really nice, did a great job with it, and I thought it was good, people coming to Oakland, see what we got going on, so it was great, and I think that's all I have, honestly.
Cool. Mike, nothing else? Just always check. All right, we'll come to mayor and commission, Sal, we'll start with you.
Just to build on what Steve was saying, it was a great turnout, you know, a lot more people than I thought was coming, and Stevie did a great announcement of everything that we have to offer here, and a lot of people afterwards, when I talked to them, they were like, we want to get, you know, to doing that, you know, chipping away at that list that you gave them of things to do here, so I think we're going to have a lot of visitors. One more, I did get my certificate of completion for my, my ethics class, so here's a proof.
You're ethical now.
Yes, now I can actually speak, I was holding my breath until I got it. So, and also the Tri-County League of Cities Cities, and I'm sure, I don't want to take any spotlight from McMullen, you know, commissioner, but you'll speak into it, it was a great to have, you know, Tony Ortiz and the commissioners and people from Apopka and Al Demy's representatives, and it was a great, great, we should have more of those, we hosted, it was nice, and enjoyed it.
Cool. Rick.
I'm good.
Pat.
Just, just following, following up behind Commissioner Ramos, yeah, we, the Tri-County League had the Thursday meeting on May twentieth, and then right behind it, we had ethics training, so I'll bring in my certificate as well for those long four hours. I would say it was probably one of the better ones, the, the lawyer that gave it, gave the meeting was kind of, you know, very informative, and he didn't make it, he didn't make it dry, it was, it was a great meeting as far as doing those four hours for the ethics, but it was a good, a good, a good meeting. Then like Commissioner Ramos stated, on May second, the Tri-County League held the civics one-on-one meeting, you know, just trying to get our citizens involved as relates to, you know, the things that we're doing on a state legislator, state, on a state legislator, legislative issues and concerns. I already know, we all know that we are submitting a, a letter to veto the home-based business preemption that's coming from Tallahassee, and so, you know, we had a great meeting, just, you know, sharing that with the community and hope to do more of those meetings around the Tri-County area. We're trying to get more of the elected in different parts of the, the Tri-County area to, you know, just get our citizens involved, because as we see, there's more preemption coming our way. June fourth, next week, Friday, I'll be, I'm on, I'm on the board of the Florida League of Cities, and so I'll be in a meeting in Miami discussing some of the Florida League of Cities priorities and, and, and things that they have set. With that being said, the session starts, you know, I know we all know this, the session starts for next year in January, and so the Florida League of Cities will start having their policy committees, I've been, I've signed up for land use and economic development, I'm actually the co-chair, and so those meetings are June eleventh, that's on a, on a Friday, and July sixteenth or seven, whatever that Friday is, and then August, as we all know, the annual convention is coming up and it'll be in Orlando, and so we will see a lot of communications about that, and I'll get with Alicia to make sure I get signed up for the, for that conference, but the, the actual policy committees that goes through the Florida League of Cities, and so a lot going on with the Florida League of Cities, a lot going on with Tri-County. There aren't any meetings for the Tri-County during the summer, that's normal, so our next meeting for the Tri-County League of Cities will be at the annual conference in August, and in the morning, we know we have a breakfast, so I know, you know, more of us join and attend the meeting when it's in Orlando, and so, you know, just be on the lookout for that, and then, you know, just getting ready for the session, as we all know, whatever did get passed in twenty twenty-one definitely will be hot topics for twenty twenty-two, and as more information comes our way, from FLC, I definitely will share it, and I know Alicia and Steve, they do monitor those emails as well, so that's it.
Cool. All right, Mayor. You good, Kathy?
I'm good, I hope to be back soon, and I'm in touch with Steve if anybody needs anything, and I appreciate your patience.
All righty, and the two things I have firstly is, we miss you Kathy, we'll be glad to have you back, and everything goes well up there for you. Secondly, is in the words Alice Cooper, school's out for the summer. We had a really trying year this year, and we know that as we go back to school next year, the mask mandate is done, so everything goes back, hopefully to traditional school. The, the drive-by for fifth grade went wonderful. Sal and Rick were there along with Steve and, and chief and, and the police, and it was a wonderful turnout, the kids were very excited, and really, we should talk about, that is kind of a cool way for fifth grade to graduate, regardless of whether we're in pandemic, because what it did was kids got to be with their parents and decorate their cars and kind of be a part of it all together, and their parents were part of it rather than just going into an auditorium, so it was a really, really cool event that I thought went very well, they emceeded it good, so, but bottom line is, we are done for the summer also, so we'll, same way, SAC will come back and convene in, I think, either August or September, depending on, you know, what happens this summer. So that is all I have.
Music on the porch on Friday.
Oh, that's right, yes.
Music on the porch on Friday for the Arts and Heritage Center, so.
And it's in the, Alicia.
Mud Rooster.
Was it?
Yeah, Mud Roosters.
Mud Rooster.
It's Mud Rooster, eleven to three.
Yep, they do rock and blues, they, they do it all, Mike, so you, you've probably seen it before, Jim Young, he used to do a lot downtown Winter Garden. Yeah, so he's been around for a while, yeah.
Cool.
And the scavenger hunt, same day?
Scavenger hunt's the same day with the Winter Garden Heritage Foundation and Arts and Heritage Center, project for the kids, so, cool.
All right, well, if there's nothing else, Commissioner McMullen, we will turn it over to you.
If all hearts and minds are satisfied, let's adjourn, it is now seven thirty-five PM, have a great week and a great Memorial Day weekend coming up.
Everybody be safe, thank you.